I'd like to call the meeting to order, please. If those who care to join me stand and will say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Uh, roll call. Everyone's here. Okay. I'd like to read the board norms. Debate, commentary, and discussion are healthy and open. Listening and speaking are equally important and both should be done with respect and consideration. Focus is on students and our schools, not politics. Assume best intentions in all discussions. If I could please have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Uh, motion passes. Um, and we have discussions and a vote on our two mayoral board appointments. Um, if our two candidates could come up to the, the table. You know Lauren?
Hi.
Hi guys.
Um, so I'd like to, if it's alright with you, I'd like to ask the board members if they have any questions of you before we have our vote. That's fine. Anyone? Karen?
Ryan and Karen.
Oh, okay.
I think Ryan was first. Go ahead, Ryan.
How are you both today?
Good, thank you. How are you?
I was just gonna ask each of you why you wanted to get on the board. I know that you've been on the board before, um, but just ask each of you why you wanted to get back on or on the board.
Sure. Well, as you mentioned, I've served before, uh, for five years, I think. Um, and, uh, when this situation presented itself, I, I I wouldn't say I eagerly wanted to come back, but I, I thought it would be a good idea because I've done it before and it will be easier to kinda get back to it and not have like a learning curve for somebody to fill in for, um, a, a year that was not completed. So I, uh, decided to take on the appointment and see kinda where it goes and make the decision closer to the election of whether I wanna continue for, to, to kinda put myself for another term or not.
Um, I have not yet had the pleasure of sitting on this board. Uh, however, I did, uh, run a campaign recently and, um, I want it to be on this because I am an educator and I have a doctorate in special education and I believe that my, uh, background and information, knowledge, um, experiences could be a benefit as well as I would like to really get to know everyone in the inner workings of the school board and how we can really build more community in a time where I feel like that is really needed, so.
Thank you. Can I make a motion? Should we make a motion for each or together?
Separate.
Separate, okay. Separate, okay.
Yeah, cause they're both different positions for different people.
Okay. So may I have a motion to accept Dana Goldberg as the mayoral appointment?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Welcome Dana.
Welcome Dana, yay.
And may I have another motion? Um, to accept Lauren Weiss's, uh, mayoral appointment?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Welcome.
Yay.
And thank you so much.
Thank you both.
Thank you.
Oh, we have the, oh, first.
Okay.
Alright, so I'll have you both stand and raise your right hand and just repeat after me. I see your name.
Aye, Dana Goldberg.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully execute the office of school commissioner?
That I will faithfully execute the office of school commissioner.
To the best of my judgment and abilities?
To the best of my judgment and abilities.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I'm so excited to be back on the board with you again.
Okay, if I could have a motion, please, uh, to approve the consent agenda.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Uh, and we move into public input. Do we have anyone signed up?
No.
Anyone? Any words? Okay. Um, so we ha- we do have, uh, Tom Donahue, Lyle Jepson, and Ed Bove, uh, to speak to us about the TIF district and how it will affect the district. So.
Thank you, Madam Chair. If I could also introduce Stephanie Clark from White and Burke who was, uh, in, uh, consultants in Burlington. They're a real estate firm that also consults on municipal and community development and they're quite good at it. And, uh, maybe the Vermont experts on TIF districts tax increment financing, so.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Welcome.
I'm sitting in the hot seat so I can operate things, but, um, I, I do wish that, um, you introduce me all the time because you just did that very succinctly. I have to tell my four-year-old, mommy can't be here tonight because we're going to make towns happy. Cause it's like, I don't know how to describe that increment financing to my four-year-old. Um, but that is what I'm here for tonight, so thank you for having us. Um, yeah, I'm Stephanie Clark. I'm with White and Burke, so I've been consulting to the city for a couple of years. And I'm joined here tonight by Tom and Lyle Jepson, who I'm sure needs no introduction, but from Cedar. And Ed Bove is here from the city and, um, Sean Atkins from the RRA is back there. So in terms of people that, um, you're always welcome to ask questions of regarding the TIF district and this upcoming bond vote, they would be the people to turn to. So tonight I'm here to talk about, um, some stuff that we've been talking about for a while, but in case this, uh, any individual, but also this board collectively had not heard about it before, we wanted to come to you to, to give you the information in case you're asked questions, in case you have questions specifically because this has the word tax in it. It can be, uh, a little bit of a lightning rod or it can just beg questions. So we're here to put those questions to bed or to answer them or to maybe actually raise some that we haven't thought of that we could help educate others. Um, and I'll talk a little bit about our outreach shortly, but that will help us. Sometimes we don't know the FAQs because our head is too far in. You kinda see what you wanna see or, you know, what you think you're gonna see. So tonight we're talking about what the bond vote is about. The downtown hotel is kind of the name of the game. Um, we talked about tax increment financing, but it's really a tool to get to a goal. It's not the goal itself. It's a financing mechanism. Um, downtown hotel is the goal, so we'll talk a little bit about that. We'll talk about the infrastructure and what the vote entails, but I'll also get a little bit into the mechanics of what TIF means because it, it's important and it'll come up. And I'll try not to bore, make it boring because I thought I was gonna be a ballerina when I grew up and now I know way too much about TIF, so, uh, keep it short. And then how you as citizens and as school commissioners could, um, help if you're supportive of the project. So again, the goal is to produce and incentivize economic development in the downtown. And this is the project that you've probably heard a lot about, but a long vacant property in the core of your downtown that could be used in much better ways than just surface parking. Um, surface parking is important or parking is important, but having your core downtown have a hotel, a restaurant, a bar, uh, some, um, housing units is just going to, you know, enhance everything and the vitality of the neighboring properties as well. And the goal of any kind of economic development is not just one focus, right? It has multiple benefits. It's increasing your tax base to keep taxes down. It is increasing, um, vitality, which can decrease crime, which can decrease, um, economic impacts of all kinds. So we like to focus on this. It has its permits. It is ready to go. The hotel project team is led by the Belden develop, uh, the Belden Development Team and they have their financing in, in place as well. So they were waiting for the city. What the city can do in a lot of communities, this is now the new operating norm. How can the city take a proactive approach to incentivize development instead of just waiting for it to come? And the if you build it, they will come model has been proven over and over. It doesn't work. It has to be a public-private partnership. And so that's what this is. The city has stepped up to say, I know you can't afford to do all of this infrastructure because this is really old, really old infrastructure. You've got pipes in whales and center streets that are breaking constantly. You can't add that many hotel units to that and expect it to work. So the city said, we can step in and not only improve just what's abutting your hotel, but also more of whales and more of center so that, and underground utilities, so that it looks better, so that now multiple properties can benefit. So that's how, that's what this is all about. It's putting the infrastructure in that's a public asset that then inspires and, and catalyzes the hotel and the community around it. So this vote is on one piece of the financing that will make this all work. The bond that goes to finance a portion of this is financed through tax increment financing. It does not affect the tax rate because it's paid for this tool called TIF. So I'll explain why it doesn't affect the taxes, tax rate, but, um, it's not the only source. We've had to stack it with other sources because it's a very expensive project. And I'll get into a little more of that in a minute, but the hotel is very dependent on this and the benefits will be, um, multi-fold. So this is a graphic. We have copies. Lyle has copies here that he can distribute and will be available for the public. Um, they'll also be on the RR, RRA website, but this is a helpful tool to kind of understand the full picture beyond just what you're voting on, on October 7th. The project total is over eight million dollars when you add up cost of going into the ground, making the improvements in the pipes, doing the street scape stuff above ground that you can see. Cost of financing, we're in an environment right now with borrowing that is not easy. So there's costs of financing and the structure of our financing that, um, is creating additional cost elements and related costs. Whenever you use multiple sources of financing, there's related costs. So I point your attention to the first column, which is the TIF bond. That's what we're gonna be going up for on October 7th. That's gonna be up to 3.9 million for infrastructure and related costs and interest costs. And then we got a NBRC catalyst grant. You might've read about that in the paper, three million dollars, which is a huge, it's the highest you can get from NBRC. It's a great grant. And we've then, because we have those, we had other positive momentum. We're applying for sales tax reallocation, which is the 500,000 you can see, um, the lime green column. And that is a program through the state. And then a $500,000 Vtrans grant we've applied for. And truthfully, we've applied for more than 500,000. So that middle column that I skipped over was on purpose. The 700,000 is what the city could contribute to this project with existing funds it has and doesn't add to the tax rate. There's capital reserve money. There's money in the stormwater, uh, left over from a stormwater grant that could be invested in this project. But we may not need that if we get more in grants and we're gonna keep pursuing other funding. And, um, as Lyle will attest, up the hill, we've done, we did a tax increment financing district in Killington and the money kept coming. There was just more sources. Once you kinda get that confidence, you can see how there's additional sources of funding that wanna be invested in the project. So I'm gonna quickly do, do the, the two-minute spiel on TIF. The, in, the mechanism is called tax increment financing because it's the city that puts in the infrastructure. They take out the bond on the infrastructure. They get the debt. And then whatever resulting new development that creates taxes that come into the city are put toward that debt service. And that, it's just the incremental part. So the existing taxes continue to go where they go today, but anything that is new will go toward that debt service until it, until the end of that window. Now, the key is, but for the city making those investments, that project would never have happened anyway. So you're not, you're, it's a, it's a symbiotic relationship because otherwise that, that would just never happen. And so your tax base stayed, stayed the same. Now, at the end of the district, once you've paid your debt, now you have a much bigger tax base and that helps with your, keeping your taxes down. It's the only way a city can really help to grow its own grand list. Um, this has been done across the state. There are other examples. St. Albans is a good one. Uh, Hartford, um, the downtown of White River Junction is a good one. Barry has done this. Burlington's done it. South Burlington's done it. There's other districts across the country. They don't all do them the way Vermont does. Vermont is highly regulated. It is why you need a TIF consultant, unfortunately, or for my family, fortunately. Um, it is the fact that we do it very, very well and you have a development agreement with a developer that makes it just much less risky than any other type that's done around the country.
Stephanie, I just wanna mention on that note too, that the thing is it's regulated. There's only two allowed per county throughout the state.
Districts, yeah.
Uh, district.
Yeah, yeah.
And so Killington and now Rutland. So we're very fortunate to have gotten this one through the process and approved.
That's right, yeah.
Because we were the second of the two.
That's right. That's right. So yes, the city was approved on its district back in the spring and this is the first project in the district. There can be future projects because you got a full district, um, that can only be two per county. And one of the reasons it's highly regulated is because a portion of the taxes, um, it's a portion of not just the general fund municipal tax, but a portion of the incremental new education fund taxes that get, um, diverted into a TIF fund and the TIF fund is what pays the debt service. But it's only up to 70%. 70% of the education fund taxes, new taxes, not on the existing, that go to the TIF fund. And then 30% go into the ed fund. So again, if we didn't do this, this hotel is, this hasn't been done in 50 years. Like it's been sitting there since the seventies, right? So without that, you don't have that new increment, that new, that new tax base that's going to the ed fund. There's 30%. Um, we calculated just this project will generate around two million over the 20 years that goes to the education fund before the bigger amount goes in. So more will go in once you stop retaining some to pay debt service. And then a portion goes to the general fund and a portion goes to the TIF fund out of the municipal tax.
Can you say that again?
Thank you, because I kinda wanna reframe, restate. I kinda went in the wrong order.
So if you could restate it, but also there's nothing that's currently going into the gen ed fund? Like currently at our, where we are, that's going to be taken?
Right.
To pay?
Exactly.
For the bond. I just wanted to clarify that.
Yep. So whatever taxes, I think the current value, no, let's use a different property because I don't know the exact value of the Belden site, the, the property that's now. But let's say it was a property that was worth $500,000 and they're gonna pay their taxes on currently to the ed fund and the general fund for the municipality. That continues to flow just like that. Then after they finish their development and it's a 1.5 million dollar project at the end, all the taxes on the 500,000 fully go to the ed fund and the general fund. The new taxes on the one million get split up three ways. Some to the ed fund, some to the general fund, and some to the TIF fund, but only on that new million-dollar value. And that.
I'm sorry, could you just tell us what, um, ratio would go to who?
Yeah. So it's of the municipal general fund tax, municipal tax, it's 85% goes to the TIF fund and 15 to the general fund. Eighty-five, fifteen of just the local. Of the state education fund, it's 70, 30. 70 to the TIF fund, 30 to the ed fund.
Until it's paid off?
Until it's, until 20 years is over.
That's how long it takes to pay?
It's 20 years of retention. Um, so the district was created in 2025 and we, if we incur our first debt in 2026, because we won't. Okay, well, that's relieving, but that one looks nicer. What, how, alright, Tom. Um, I, i- in 2026, if you incur that debt, that's what starts the 20-year clock. So 20 years of retention from your first debt.
Yeah.
This is very technical, I'm sorry.
What is the imp, I mean, I'm sure you understand that right now?
Yeah.
We have no idea what the state of Vermont is doing with education and the education system.
Yeah.
Have you done any research or is there any idea what the impact could be if, depending on what the state does?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, it's a really good question and it's something we've looked at a lot. So in legislative session last year, in the 2025 legislative session, there was a lot of attention on TIF with that exact question in mind. And so there were some, um, analyses done where they broke out what, they looked at what would've happened in certain communities, especially the ones that have already been mature for a little while here. So what could happen if the ed fund rate went way down? For example, if the tax rate went, went down or what happens if the tax rate goes up? And, you know, there looked to be, the analyses showed that they, that these TIF districts remain solvent and the end of the, at the end of the day, the amount of money that's going to the ed fund today just doesn't, those problems would exist either way, right? Cause that's just not changing. It's a base level. And so anything new, um, that we're incentivizing is gonna help the situation. Is, was, was the finding. That was the conclusion of the group, the committee that worked on this. Because there's the 30% coming off these new projects that wouldn't happen otherwise. Um, you know, what you can look at, and I, I point to St. Albans. I know a lot of people point to St. Albans for a lot of these examples, but, um, Hartford has a similar example, which is their, their growth rate, their ta, their grand list was not growing for 20 years. It was not growing, it was growing very, very modestly. And so it means your tax rates really struggle. Um, and so what happened when they got the TIF district is it went massively, exponentially grew and it kept that tax rate down. And then it, by proxy, you're sending that 30% to the ed fund.
There are very few economic development tools in the state of Vermont. This is a unique one and very good for the city of Vermont. We've been working on this for two years now. Um, and as you say, it's very well regulated. You're gonna hear stories about, well, out west they have this TIF thing and that didn't go very well. True. They were not regulated and it is very well regulated here in the state of Vermont. Um, it will be exciting to see this happen. And to back to Karen's question, we, you may hear on the street, well, it's taking out of the ed fund. Well, you can't take something that's not there because this money's not there yet.
Right.
And there will be actually more money going in because of this process than less. It won't be as much as, let's say the hotel was built without the TIF. Well, there would be more going in at that point, but the hotel can't be built because the infrastructure isn't there and it's gotta be put there in order to do that. And it's not just helping the hotel because it's helping all the downtown businesses. There are businesses downtown, if you remember back in the days when, um, Mayor Loris was digging up water lines and showing you that there are water lines this big, but there was stuff inside them that made the water line this big. Those lines are still there. And we, buildings downtown can't put fire suppression systems on the upper floors because there isn't capacity enough to do that. So we could have more people living downtown if we had the capacity to have more water downtown. And so there are a lot of positive things that are gonna happen outside of the hotel. And we're very lucky to have the Beldons as the, the contractors. They've been in town for a very long time. They're going nowhere and when 20 or 30 or 40 or 50 years from now, the Beldons will still be here. The hotel will still be there. They're one of us. They're, they're our neighbors. And they're gonna be putting our neighbors to work. And so they'll have more than 150 people working on this hotel. That money going back into our economy as well. And this is just one of several projects that probably will be taking place that will add to that grand list and help all of us.
Yeah, Rutland's in a really, um, excellent position to use this tool. The state authorizes the tool because it, um, for specifically designated downtowns because of that very old aging infrastructure in such tight quarters. So you talk about places with zero lot lines and how are they supposed to fix things outside their property line and do things in the public right-of-way and take on that responsibility when they're just trying to make, and we all know how the construction cost environment has been, um, so tight. So it's in a good position to do it, especially at the scale, because you have multiple opportunities to utilize this tool. So we've, um, used this tool in lots of places. The schools have always been supportive in these other communities. Um, you're welcome to talk to your peers in other TIF communities for their school, um, commission, school boards, uh, that have, have seen what has happened in those scenarios. I encourage everybody. The one thing I wish we could do as a state better, and my company's trying to do it, but I think we are working in a multifaceted way of trying to get TIF communities connected more so that they could talk to each other and learn from each other's examples and then share best practices. Um, so that's one way to, to kind of do your own research if you wanted. So my, my ask to the commission today is to get out people for the vote. It's a special election. It's fall. It's gonna be gorgeous. People are wanting to do other things, but it's October 7th, um, so we really hope people will get out and vote. There will be lawn signs available. Um, do you wanna speak to the lawn signs, Lyle?
I will. I won't get political, Kathy, but I can say vote yes because, um, we're, we're, we have signs that say vote yes. So if you would like to come into the office and pick up a lawn sign, we have a whole bunch of them. We believe at the Chamber of Economic Development that this is a real great moment for Rutland City. And so we're putting some money into the get out the vote and hopefully that vote will be yes.
The city will also have signs available, um, at RRA that say, go out and vote. Just vote. Just vote on the 7th, however you'd like.
If you put the signs on the bus, it just says, check our vote.
Yeah.
So that's how, that's how we'd like to, um, you know, help you educate your, your neighbors too. And we're happy to answer questions or whatever at this point.
I have a question. So you said that it's only two communities in a county?
Mm-hmm. That get a district.
Or district.
Mm-hmm.
Um, if it's something that's so positive, why is it only two?
Great question. Um, there is a contingent of legislation, uh, legislature that has tried to restrict the tool because they're not sure. I think the main thing would be wanting to see more proof of concept. There was discussion of raising that bar at some point and there was a lot of pushback saying, we don't, we wanna see how other communities are doing with it. Um, if all the communities do it, does it, had, what is the cumulative impact? Um, and this, all the economic studies I've seen have shown that if every community had a TIF district, there'd be a cumulative positive impact, but they are not always swayed. And so there are some opponents of the TIF program. Um, the, um, one component of that I wanted to mention, but.
It's a great question though because.
I'm liking.
Another positive step has been taken forward with a CHIP program, which is similar to the TIF, only it's smaller. And so smaller communities can now take advantage of that specifically when it has to do with housing. Because we know we have a housing issue and so there is a similar, they used to call it mini-TIF, but now they're calling it CHIP. And don't ask me what CHIP stands for, but I'm sure housing is part of, is the H. Um, so smaller communities, fair havens, the, the Brandons of the world will be able to do a similar concept using a similar TIF process.
I remembered what I was gonna say, real quick. I'll just say it's that, um, there is a contingent of folks who don't agree, who don't see incentives working. There's a lot of economists who will say, um, they don't believe in, in, you know, it's, it's, uh, it, it's a free market. So a free market, it should make sense. It should pencil on its own without public partnership. And I vehemently disagree because I have seen where partnerships have been very, very successful. Not across the board, have to be done with proper safeguards and risk mitigation. And, um, one of the things we can show is how it hasn't happened. So they very firmly believe there's no such thing as a but for, that this, this hotel would've happened anyway. That's what some of the opponents will say. It's been 50 years. I haven't seen it happen. So I do think that lacks a little credibility. However, what they'll also say is, well, it would've happened, maybe not at that site, but somewhere. And the point of the TIF program, what the state has said then overwhelmingly, which is why it got passed, is, but we wanna see it in our downtown. We wanna see the hotels locating downtown. There are communities where they say, well, the hotel could've been out at the interchange of, uh, you know, at the highway, wherever, you know, we're talking about. And, but we want it in our downtown. So yes, it would've happened, but it wouldn't have happened where we want it with the density, with the scale, on the timeline. Yes, it might've happened in 10 more years and it would've been 50 rooms and it would've been elsewhere. So, you know, this is a little bit of trying to align values with the, um, instrument.
And it is a combination of hotel rooms and living spaces, so there'll be some apartments as well as the restaurant. Um, I did wanna confess that I am old enough to say that I was at the fire that created the pit in the first place. Um, so I can attest that yes, it's been the pit for that long. And we, and I was economic development director for the city for half a dozen years, working for Jeff Lynn Bergen. I wasn't able to fill it at the time, so this is particularly exciting to me. Um, I also just wanna point out that the whole district is, um, beyond the downtown. And, uh, people like Ed Bove and Lyle and others have created this, um, district that was approved by the Royal City Board of Alderman. So there'll be many more projects beyond this one. This hopefully is the catalyst for the others to occur within that district boundary that we created. And that district boundary was then approved by the state and it's the BEPSI Vermont Economic Progress Council that approved it this summer, so that it's now an official district that we can now work within and do many more of these hopefully, but this one, you accomplish the first one and it'll open the gates for the others to happen.
Is the district the entire city or downtown or?
Uh, it's a portion, it's, um, it's this, it mirror, it doesn't quite mirror the special benefit district that's existing in downtown, if you remember that, Karen.
Yes, yeah.
Uh, it's actually that plus some, uh, extended around it. And, uh, because there are some great development areas and some potential projects that were outside of the special benefit district that we wanted to make sure was included in that.
It's on the RRA website, the map is. Did you have another question?
So we talked, kind of like what Karen's question was in regards. So we talked, kind of like what Karen's question was in regards to the education funding piece of it. You know, we, we're getting kind of closer to knowing what's going to be happening in regards to the education overall in the state. And you had talked about the legislature, and there have been like conversations. So is, was part of that conversation, so even with this district, we know we're beating like that 30%, is that still going to be guaranteed to us, or is it going?
It's grandfathered in.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah. It has to be grandfathered in. I mean, these legal agreements are all bound to the statute as it's written, in the time that it's written. Because these, we have a development agreement, the city has a development agreement with the Beldons, so it runs with the land. Therefore, you know, it runs with the tax value, the assessed value of the property. So yeah, there's some safeguards in there to protect the existing projects that have already been done. If that changed for some reason, which it would be very, I'd be very hard pressed to see that changing kind of going forward, I don't think it could even affect any of the future projects we might do, because I think we're grandfathered as a district. But I think we'd want to keep an eye on that if we're doing, you know, a project down at, or up at the gateway, or we're doing a project, you know, across the street, or wherever we do our next project, our next project.
Really good questions, though, actually.
Yeah, it is, actually, yeah.
Just to reiterate a little bit of what you're saying, so the funding as it exists right now is not going to be affected, because this is something that is going to only affect the bond part, will be only affecting the new, the new money of whatever is going to...
New development.
The new development of whatever is going to be built. I, so I think that's crucial for people to, this conversation is important, because I think it's crucial for people to understand that point, that nothing is going to change as it is right now from a funding standpoint. If we do nothing, we're still going to be in the same position, right?
Exactly, yeah.
What will happen, and this is regardless of the Ed Fund, but what, what will happen to the city economic development if we don't vote this? Like, what is the, we talk about the risk of taking on some debt. What is the risk of not taking this, of not doing this?
Yeah, I think that's a very, very important point. And that's one of the reasons that I support it as well, because I think the risk is, you know, having things become, you know, stale and stay the same, not having this catalyst. This is a huge investment, that we've all talked about it for, so this is a catalyst. But without that, you know, you're looking for that spark. And I don't know what the next spark would be. But I have to say that, to your point, additionally, if we don't, weren't to do this, those infrastructure projects are probably still going to need to be done at some point. We all saw the flooding in downtown Rutland, for instance, exceeds capacity right now. This includes, and I have a really boring list here, but wastewater upgrades, wastewater, stormwater system installation, overhead utility burial, and of course, the streetscape improvements we want to do to Center Street. Those are things, particularly the infrastructure piece, that we may very well have to do anyway, at a cost to the taxpayer. So if this is in place, this increment will retire that indebtedness without creating additional expense for the taxpayer that we might encumber if we were to do nothing, to your point.
I think that, to that point, there are those studies that have been done of other municipalities, now that they've been a little bit more matured. St. Albans, for example, is done with all of its indebtedness, so they've passed their period of being able to do any more pro, new projects, new infrastructure bonding. But what they saw is that if they hadn't done it, what was the trajectory? And then you think about what you just mentioned. So I was just saying, growth trajectory of like development and grand list growth, but then you add in, what would those expenses have been that would have popped up? It's kind of a, you know, there is no do-nothing scenario. There isn't. Like, it's either you're going to bond for it through the TIF mechanism and other sources combined with this, or you're going to put it on the water and sewer rate in a few years to pay for it.
And along those lines, I just want to say to Karen...
No, that's okay, go ahead.
We were classmates, so I can do this. That, it's really, really important to know, too, that there's quite a bit of money leveraged. So for instance, that MBRC is what I think you're calling the acronym, but the Northern Borders Regional Commission Grant Application, which is a federal program that is like an economic development grant program, it just has that name, and I don't know why. But to land the maximum amount of $3 million, leverages that $3 million, it doesn't cost our taxpayers anything. These are funds that now come here for this infrastructure that weren't going to come here until these guys have played a, for a very successful application. So those, those things that I'm really, really excited about.
And it's all or nothing. Because like, if this doesn't go forward, they can't fund the project any other way, so the $3 million goes away.
We're very fortunate that Sean Atkins is the new executive director of the Rutland Media Development Authority, and comes from St. Albans, so he has experience with the TIF, at least knowing what's happening there. I don't know if you wanted to say hi or not.
Hi.
Say something? Is that why you're getting...
I really got to the question of...
So I was just wondering, the hotel will start paying taxes on their usual time? So they're not getting a deferment on taxes, are they? Or is that part of this?
Let me answer that in two ways. I'm going to start with the first way, you finish with the second. The first is that in a normal TIF district, in any given TIF district, a property just starts, TIF does not mean you defer taxes. It means you pay your taxes, just like, when I say it won't cost you any more taxes, I mean you if you haven't changed your property. If you've changed your property and you've added, you know, 10 units to your property, you now have a higher tax bill because you've increased your value. So you keep paying taxes as if you normally would, it's more about what happens once they've been paid and they get diverted. However, in this scenario, there's a different layer being added to this. It's that there's been a combined tool using tax stabilization.
Tax stabilization, right. So there is a portion of it that is stabilized, and there will still be that base tax, and there's a stabilized portion for a certain number of years before that starts to pay the full evaluation, which we've heard numbers up as high as $30 million. I don't know what it'll end up being, that'll be up to...
How many years is that deferred or stabilized?
Their municipal portion only is stabilized for 10 years.
Yeah, and I should point out, that is just the municipal, that's the only thing we have as a tool for, and incentive for us to offer, is just the municipal portion.
And that's a different, just making it clear, what I, why I separated them is because the TIF, that doesn't actually have anything to do with TIF, that's separate, so that was their choice.
Yeah.
Thank you.
But again, it was a but-for scenario, where if we hadn't put this package together and approved it...
So they will pay no taxes for 10 years, or it's pro...
No, they'll still pay, they'll still pay their own, their state tax for 10 years.
But nothing to the city?
To the city until after, and they still pay on the existing value, which I think...
Do you remember the existing value?
On the increased value, they're not paying?
400,000 or something? I think it's 400,000 is your existing value, their existing value on the property today. So they'll continue to pay municipal tax on that.
Yeah, and there is a new valuation, I think it's a little north of that.
Interestingly enough, the reason the city, and there was a long conversation about that. And at the end of the day, the Aldermen said, yeah, we need to do this, because when the hotel is done, it won't be, they wouldn't be able to sell it for what they're going to put into it for construction costs. It's just the way things pencil out now. So it's a real interesting funding stack that is going to get the hotel in. And over time, it's going to help the city a lot. And the Aldermen have really vetted this, they've worked very hard, and I don't know what it's like here at the school board, but it's always been a unanimous vote there whenever this project has come up. Everyone's looking, and it's, this is over several, two or three, I guess, two different Aldermen elections. So whatever side of the table someone has been on, they've been voting yes on this project.
And back when I was economic development director, Bill Schuldeis and I were responsible for bringing Vermont Country Store to Rutland, and offered them an eight-year tax stabilization agreement, which was required or they weren't coming here. And we won them, we landed them. But that eight years has gone by a long time ago, and they've tripled in size and tripled their employment ever since. And so it's, we've been seeing the fruits of that, you know, period that we had to offer in order to make it happen here.
So true or nothing changes from where we are? Because they're still paying the same municipal tax that they paid last year that they're going to pay every year, but just not paying the difference until they're more stabilized and able to do so? Am I understanding that correctly?
Correct, on the municipal portion.
But on the school side, they would be paying the increase?
Yep, and 30% of that goes now into the Ed Fund.
I do have a question. So if the tax rate is stabilized, meaning they're not going to pay city taxes, does that mean that the entire debt is repaid in the remaining 10 years?
Wow, do you want to see my spreadsheet? You seem very excited about this, which is really cool, because actually, it's during that first 10 years, they're, the portion of their education taxes that does, that they do pay, goes into the TIF fund. So that starts to help pay down that debt service. What you're getting at is actually a really key question with every TIF district, which is that the city always has to go first, infrastructure has to go first, then the building. So you always have a weird gap with that first project, that there's no increment to pay your debt service in the early years. So we manage that through cash flow. That's why the cost, I mentioned, cost of borrowing, that's why. Because that, you have to get yourself through, and you don't want to add it to the tax rate of, you know, trying to do an extra money, so you just use bond proceeds to pay for that for a little while, and that way it catches up. But they are already feeding that TIF fund with their education fund taxes early on. And then after 10 years, yes. And what's really great is that you're a district, so it isn't that program that Lyle was referring to, not just this one site. So hopefully, there'll be other projects too, and then they'll start contributing. So it's realistic that a lot of districts actually pay off their debt, not early, because you don't really pay off bonds early, but they, they're able to be solvent very quickly, because you've got all these new projects starting, because it's a, you know, a nice forward momentum.
And I should point out that the stabilization starts at the completion of the construction, which is about a two-year window.
Do you want to add?
I think it's a little bit past the point, but we kind of touched upon it, but with it, going back to the worst-case scenario, if it doesn't pass, please don't vote no, is my official thing I can say legally. But if it doesn't go the way that we hope it goes, it is time-sensitive. Either way, the TIF, we have a 10-year window to incur debt on it. It sounds more intimidating than it, than it is, in my experience. I've done this here and elsewhere for about 10, 15 years now. Then we run out of time, and then we don't get this tool back. So I think it's just a very important thing to, oh, we try it again, well, then we lose another project likely down the road. So it's genuinely time-sensitive. This is the first one, but it is genuinely, we only have 10 years to get this first section done, so, yeah. Hi.
I know we probably have to get moving on our agenda, but I had one quick question about the sales tax reallocation.
Yeah.
You said that's through this, that's a, that's a state allocation?
Yeah.
Do we know what it's, you know, what it...
Yeah, it's a cool tool that...
Where it comes from, yeah.
I was hoping someone asked the question, I just didn't want to offer it in case no one cared. But it's, I talk about a lot of nerdy things, there's a lot of things you might not care about. Sales tax reallocation is a state program, and it means that the city and the Beldons, as the developer, apply together, and the sales tax on the construction materials for the project go back to the city to pay for the infrastructure. So it's kind of a cool tool that only specific projects can make, can take advantage of, and really, it makes it so that it's a reinvestment in, in the actual public asset.
That's very cool.
And it's...
Just the 1% or the whole amount?
Just the sales tax on the...
The local portion?
Of the, well, sales tax is its own entity.
State amount, yes.
The state, yeah, just not, it doesn't, sales tax only, so it's not education fund tax, it's just sales tax on the construction materials. And that, that amount is, the key there is that it's going back into the infrastructure itself, so it's a public, you know, one of the nice things about TIF, too, is that it's investing in things that have public benefit. It's not just things that benefit one person, it's, you know, everybody's benefiting from better streets, better pipes, so forth.
So the 1%, we do have a 1% sales tax.
I was literally just thinking about that. That's the city's local, right? Yeah, I think it's a, was it 6% or is there 5?
6% plus 1, so the 6% is coming back.
6% plus 1, okay, yeah. This is not my program, so I can't totally vouch for it, but the state sales tax, if it's 5% on state sales tax, that's what...
The 6%.
6% plus 1?
Okay, I couldn't remember, 5 plus 1 or 6 plus 1?
1% 75%.
It's already coming here.
Local 30%.
Yes. So the 6 that's going to the state is going to come to us?
To the city for that piece, yeah, yeah. Up to 500,000, I think that's the limit, the cap.
That's still a good chunk of change.
Yeah, it's a really good tool to bring that back, local.
It's a good point, it's a really good point.
Yeah. Yeah. So all you're asking from us, if I'm, is just, you know, knowledge. Knowledge, and to tell people to get out and vote, and...
Please don't vote no.
Vote yes. I didn't say that. Yes, good, just good to know. You know, these are things that we just think, if you're, you're as plugged in as anybody, probably, so we just wanted to bring this to your attention, so you're more educated to tell your neighbors and your peers. And maybe you just learned tonight that you don't want my job. Like, it's just that, just really in the weeds, right? So...
I really appreciate it, because I was very confused about how, you know, we've all heard a lot about the TIF in Killington, and really knowing that it's a tax program to help spur the economy, but not really understanding exactly how it works. And I'm sure I don't totally understand, but I have a better grasp on it.
Good, thank you.
So I appreciate so much of coming.
Yeah, the word tax, if I could wave my magic wand, I'd give it a different name, because tax does, it's a lightning rod. But the RRA website has, has all the materials, so, RRA website, and that graphic that Lyle passed out can be kind of helpful with the little sidebar that explains why this is being stacked the way it is.
This is really good.
Thank you.
If you want a yes sign.
I'll call you, I'll take a yes sign.
You know where I live.
Thank you.
You can put a yes.
And Chair, I did want to say that I am a product of Rutland High School, and next year, God willing, I'll be receiving my Golden Diploma in June.
Oh, fantastic.
So, yeah, I've come a long way. Wink, wink to Karen over there.
She just got hers in June.
I got mine this year.
And I also wanted to say, David Allerin, his wisdom, appointed me on the Board of Aldermen to be liaison to the school board. So if you have anything you want to communicate to the board, please feel free to email me at iloverutlandvt@gmail.com, iloverutlandvt@gmail.com. And we meet every two weeks, of course, and I'd be glad to communicate to that, to the board at any time, anything that you want to get in front of them.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tom.
Thanks, Tom.
Thank you all so much, thank you.
Thanks to your audience for the time, too.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, all your hard work. Hi. So we're moving to our student representative reports. Are we, would you like to, how are you starting? How are you?
I'm just going to start with the intermediate and elementary schools, and then Danielle will go quickly. And I know everyone else is presenting too, so we'll try and be quick about it.
Could you just make sure to speak up, because sometimes it's hard to hear?
Yes.
You can move that microphone closer to you, if you like.
Okay. All right. At RIS, we are excited to welcome everyone back for a new school year. Our back-to-school and open house will be held on Tuesday, September 17th. The evening will begin with a family barbecue at 5:00 PM, followed by the open house starting at 5:45 PM. Families will also have the opportunity to meet and hear from Mrs. Kaludi during the introduction. This is a wonderful chance to connect with teachers, visit classrooms, and learn about the year ahead. We encourage all families to join us for an evening of community conversation and celebration. A heartfelt thank you to our custodial staff for their hard work preparing the building for students. We also extend our gratitude to our administrative assistants for ensuring everything was ready We also extend our gratitude to our administrative assistants for ensuring everything was ready for a smooth start to the year. Northeast Primary had a productive summer with both projects and programming taking place across the building. We are excited to share that our kindergarten and first grade classrooms received upgrades to improve storage and functionality. They're looking great. In June, teachers also spent a week reimagining classroom environments using the support of AI tools to create spaces that are more organized, intentional, and student-centered. This year, we are thrilled to welcome Nicole Adams as our full-time PE teacher. With her addition, students will now have PE twice per week, including the launch of our K-2 lifetime sports program, Northeast Trailblazers. This program gives our youngest learners the opportunity to build foundational skills in lifetime Vermont sports at a pivotal stage of development. We are also pleased to welcome Alexa McGlaughlin as a new special educator to our school. We look forward to connecting with families at our open house and ice cream social on September 10th at 5:30 PM, hosted in partnership with our PTC. A Title I family meeting will take place beforehand at 5:00 PM. And at Northwest, we are welcome to, we are excited to welcome students back for a new school year. Teachers have been hard at work preparing their classrooms to ensure a positive and engaging learning environment for all students. A very big thank you goes out to our custodial maintenance staff for all they accomplished over the summer. Classroom moves were completed smoothly and the building looks incredible. In addition, improvements were made to the entrance of the playground, including a new pad and pathway leading up to the parking lot. This upgrade will make dismissing car riders, especially during the winter months, much easier and safer. We are also looking forward to welcoming families to our open house on Wednesday, September 24th at 6:00 PM. This event provides students with the opportunity to showcase their learning spaces and gives families a chance to connect with our staff. Prior to the open house, we invite families to attend our annual Title I family engagement meeting at 5:30 PM.
From the middle school, our 7th graders join us tomorrow for 7th grade orientation. We are looking forward to having them join RMS. On Thursday, all students will be back with us. On Friday, September 5th, our whole school heads to Pittsburgh Rec for our annual lake day. This is a great opportunity for us to create a sense of community and build relationships. We have our barbecue and kickball game on Thursday, September 11th. We are excited to meet all of our families and to spend time with our students outside of school. We would love to have you join us as well. From the Rutland High School, Rutland High School is wrapping up our in-service and is ready to welcome 9th grade students tomorrow. During in-service, we were pleased to welcome Andrea Hallnigspil, who taught us about how we can develop reading skills in students who struggle to read. She focused on vocabulary development and word acquisition.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions for our student reps?
Amelia, can you tell me what the the date was for the RIS open house?
Yes, the RIS open house is Tuesday, September 17th.
Thank you.
Yeah. It starts at 5:00 PM.
Thank you.
Or sorry, the barbecue starts at 5:00 PM and the open house starts at 5:45.
Thank you.
Oh, is it Tuesday or Wednesday?
Tuesday, September 17th is what it says on my paper.
I think it's a Wednesday.
It's a Wednesday. It's a Wednesday, okay.
Wednesday, September 17th?
Noted, Wednesday, September 17th. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, opening, opening of school report, building administrators, please.
Good evening. I'm Kristy Kaludi, I'm the principal of Rutland Intermediate School.
I'll start, is that all right?
Absolutely.
So we're excited to get back. The first few days with the staff have been, for us, remarkable. We are really working on building school climate, working on a goal for me this year. I have a few goals. One, I told the staff, it's student behavior. That's a really big focus of mine, and staff morale. So I've been really focusing the last five days around that. I will definitely say that the intermediate school, country music is their kryptonite. So when I started playing country music, everybody like just started dancing in the auditorium, really a great positive vibe, vibe. You'll hear a few different things that I'm implementing at the intermediate school throughout the year, so if you have any feedback, just reach out to me. I'm super excited and we have a lot of great things that are happening, so. Excited to start.
I'm Megan Marsh, I'm the principal at the middle school. I'm going to go a little cheesy, I don't normally dip into cheesy, but I'm just feeling incredibly grateful for our staff and want to tell you how amazing they have been this this week of in-service. We are starting the year a little bit short-staffed, which, as many of you probably know, can feel a little uneasy, but when our staff walked in the door, you couldn't tell. They showed up and they were full of energy, they were collaborating, they were all in, no questions asked, right off the bat. They have been phenomenal supporting each other and our school and their commitment is exceptional. So I just wanted to, you heard all of our student updates, but wanted to give you an update on on where our staff is and I think handling a few weeks with a staff shortage is, feeling much better about it. They are, they're all pitching in and going above and beyond.
All right, thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. I want to begin with kudos to our high school custodial and IT staff. Faculty walked in, great energy, great vibe, and part of that is just everything is ready to go. You know, everything from, the floors are shiny, the rooms are clean, everything looks great, computers are ready to go. So kudos to to the folks that were here through the summer for that. The focus for our in-service and kind of our year-long goal this year has been on developing and expanding, it's a little bit of a jargon, a little bit of jargon, but our multi-tiered system of support. So it's basically a structure within the school that supports student needs. What it means is we gather data specific to student skills and then we intervene to address those specific gaps. So what we currently have is a fairly robust and existing system to support students in passing classes. The difference with a multi-tiered system of support is the effort is to try to drill down a little bit deeper and look at those class grades more of as a symptom of specific skills and and developing those things. So, you know, we're we're really trying to get deeper down and look at kind of root causes. So our, our sort of the weakness, the the kryptonite in the system that is in our system right now is trying to get test data and really specific data on those skill deficits. So our efforts this in-service were to garner greater understanding of student skills, things like vocabulary acquisition, reading comprehension, fluency, those kinds of things, and to try to address those and build structures built right into the school day, directed systems in the school day that will address those skills. So that's been the focus of our in-service to start the year and we're up and running and ready to go.
All right, good evening, everyone. Justine Rowland at Northeast Primary. Do introductions or just follow the same?
Scott Corbett, Director, Allen Street Campus, Pier Point Learning Center.
And Corey Smith, Principal at Northwest. So I can kick us off. This will be my third year at Northeast and as you shared a little bit in Amelia, or you heard a little bit in Amelia's overview, we had a really busy summer. Our teachers got to spend time in their classrooms, some who have been in there for 30 years who haven't had the opportunity to go through curriculum and really rethink their spaces. And we had applied for some grant funding last year to get some new cabinets in our kindergarten and first grade classrooms. So Phase 1 of the project is looking beautiful. We also got to use AI and really think about our spaces and make sure that they are intentional and student-centered. So it was a nice merging of technology and summer work. The last two nights, both primary schools have had kinder camp programming, so we've been meeting kindergarten families. Tonight was the bus safety ride, so they took a ride around the neighborhood. Last night was an arts and crafts get-to-know-you. Both kindergarten groups are a little bigger this year, around 60 to 70 students at each school, so that's a growing number for us. And much like my colleagues, our in-service was really great. We had some opportunities to learn about our multi-language learner students, students who are, English is not their first language, and especially instructional strategies that are good for them and good for all students. And then we did some work at the high school on PLCs and how our teams can really leverage creating positive norms that help not only students, but help climate and build community.
I just have a question. How many kids in each kindergarten class?
Between our two schools? So right now at Northeast, we're about 20. We are about 20.
And that's just with one teacher with no aide or?
We don't have an aide in every single class right now. Yep, there's three kindergartens at Northeast and four at Northwest.
Wow.
Yep.
So that's much higher than normal or?
It is an increase from last year, yes. Any other questions about Northeast? Looking forward to a great school year.
I loved your video, it was awesome.
Oh, yeah, that was cute.
Thank you.
We heard a lot about partnerships prior to this and I'm really excited to say that Allen Street Campus, Pier Point Learning Center have come together to create a partnership and it's really about collaborating and providing access to all those students. And the sooner that we get students to reach them, the healthier our community will build. I really want to thank Jess Henderson, Lisa Eastman, the entire maintenance department, bus aides, custodians, for really getting our buildings right. There's been a lot of improvements. Skateboard ramps have been built at Pier Point. It's going to be really exciting to see how they access music the same way they do at Allen Street Campus and hopefully have the same type of growth there. Staff is super excited and can't wait to be there. We'd love for you all to stop by for back-to-school. Cookout will be 4:00 to 6:00 at Allen Street Campus, 5:30 to 6:30 at PPLC on September 25th. It's always a good time.
Can you just repeat that real quick?
Sure. 4:00 to 6:00 at ASC, 5:30 to 6:30 at PPLC on the 25th.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Good evening. At Northwest, I have really enjoyed, my favorite part of the school year is always people coming back into the building. Summers are often way too quiet and I have, like, like Justine at Northeast, holding kinder camp, I have really enjoyed getting to see some of the students even before the first day of school, so that's been wonderful. We have spent some time in addition to getting to know each other as staff at Northwest, continuing work that was started last year. Last year, Northwest partnered with Partnerships for Literacy and Learning, or PLL, to really focus on digging into some of our literacy practices. Last year's work focused on just sort of laying the groundwork with grade-level team meeting routines for collaboration, with structuring data teams and the processes that that team uses, and building a shared understanding of essential literacy practices. So this year, we're looking to expand that and moving from building systems to making those systems sustainable. So we are really looking to take what staff learned last year with those essential practices and really start embedding embedding it in our daily practices. And another goal that we have for this year is this will be our last year working with PLL, so how do we take this work and how do we make it sustainable beyond our partnership with them? Our goals for this year is we're going to continue our monthly meetings with our schoolwide data team. We are working with grade-level teams. They are identifying instructional needs that are specific to their teams and working with PLL on that. And we are offering more opportunities for one-on-one and grade-level coaching opportunities for our teachers so that they can have their instructional practices, they have that opportunity for someone to observe if they choose and then to receive feedback and suggestions. I would say that time is often the kryptonite, to steal the term, to implementation. So what we've done this year with our schedule is each grade level now has two common planning times every single week that will be dedicated to the following. They will be asked to look at grade-level data on a routine basis. They will be collaborating with each other on those essential practices that they learned last year, as well as diving deeper into some that that they have identified. And then participating in plan-do-study-act or PDSA cycles, both with and without the support of PLL. We launched our work with PLL last Friday, we invited them in, they spent a few hours with our staff and each grade-level team set goals, including strengthening our vocabulary instruction across all of our grade levels, using flexible groups for targeted small group and individual instruction for students. And we did not get to the essential practice of writing last year, so staff have identified that as a need for this year as well. So we're really looking forward to our work with PLL and just strengthening strengthening the collaboration within and across the grade levels in our building. And we're looking forward to a great year.
And we wish you a great year.
Thank you.
I was thinking, when Greg was talking as well, that all the great things that you're talking about that you're wanting to looking into and I'm looking forward to what you will bring for data.
I think we should be expecting some data, I feel. There was some data we were supposed to be getting, I just remember from who.
That'd be great.
Yeah, you like data. Yeah, we do.
Can you say again what PLL is?
Yes, Partnerships for Literacy and Learning.
And that's like a, that was a, like a timestamp, that was a timeframe project?
Yes, it was a two, a two-year partnership.
Yep, okay.
And could I ask, with that partnership, that's where you have the coaching opportunities for teachers?
Yes, so that is something that we asked for this year, was to have additional coaching opportunities.
And that's if the teachers want that?
So yes, coaching works best if if it's being initiated by the classroom teacher.
Will you have data on how many teachers take advantage of that?
Yes, yep.
Thank you so much.
Hello. Melissa Connor, I'm the director at Stafford. So we're the only campus in the district that has preschoolers through adult students in our building, so quite a range. So last week on Wednesday, we welcomed our preschoolers. So for the last week, we've had T-Rex dinosaurs, princesses, firefighters, and ballerinas gracing our halls each day, so that's been exciting. Tomorrow, we'll be welcoming 245 students, which is a high number for us, representing 12 different high schools this year, as well as homeschool students. So we're really excited about that. And I think one of the most exciting things is that after 11 years, we have a common arrival and departure time. Everyone will be arriving and departing at the same time.
That's awesome.
Taking us 11 years to get there, but we're there. But anyway, so that's really exciting. Our evenings are starting up as well. The Vermont State University GE Apprentice classes began this week. So we have classes four nights a week where those students are coming in and using our facility and some of our teachers are involved in that as well. We also have the adult cosmetology, the LNA program happening this time, it's at The Meadows, so we're using that as a local facility. And so that's really exciting, as well as our CDL driving school is all raring to go, so exciting. Our high school staff, we've been focusing on a lot of cross-curricular projects where we are having our academic teachers teaming up with our program instructors to embed the academics and really make it more meaningful to our students. So with our professional development this year, they're really developing those projects. Two of our staff members, Lauren Gaitis and Diane Berman, led some professional development and will be continuing to do that around collaboration and co-teaching. It's been really well-received and the teachers are really excited about these projects that they'll be doing throughout the year. And they've kind of created a theme for the year and it's we are better together in bringing those groups together. And then I want to say special thanks to Glenn Scott and the maintenance team. We've had a lot of projects happening at Stafford this summer, including some asbestos abatement, renovating our auto tech garage, which was a huge undertaking. They were actually still digging in concrete today and hopefully pouring some concrete. Hopefully it happened after I left to come here or tomorrow morning so that we can have our new alignment lift installed on Tuesday, because that's the date we have, so we're hoping that it happens. So they've done an incredible amount of work, as well as the stormwater drainage system in, at our main entrance, which was finally seeded and hay put down on it today, so that was exciting.
Yeah, it was a big hole.
That was a big hole. So, and then the other thing, about five years ago, we started a strategic plan at Stafford and really excited that in our fifth year, the final piece, the tech exploratory program will be kicking off this year, as well as that common departure and arrival time. So those were the final pieces and will have accomplished the five-year strategic plan that we set out, so we're really excited about that.
Great, congratulations.
And then finally, our back-to-school night is also September 5th. We have a barbecue and that is from 6:00 to 8:00 and we would welcome you all to join us. Thank you.
I have a question, Melissa.
Oh, yes, Dina.
In terms of enrollment, are you seeing, are you taking in more students this year? It's a two-part question.
Yes.
Are we taking in more students in terms of expanding programs? And second part of it, do we have to turn a lot of students away? Are we seeing a higher application rate for Stafford?
Yeah, we have a trend of higher application rates over the last probably four to five years. Right now, I didn't look since last week, but we have probably about 78 students overall center-wide still on a waitlist that could have shuffled a little bit. We have some programs that have waitlists that are 20 students deep. We do have some openings in some programs. Culinary arts, there's still some openings. Our tech exploratory program still has a couple of seats and public safety has some seats. But other than that, the majority of the programs are full with waitlists, so.
Nice.
We are at capacity for most programs.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Melissa. And now we're on to our very first superintendent's report. They're making this very easy because I've been ticking off like things on my superintendent's report that they've already shared. Couple of things, though, we have a new food service, Genuine, and I've been extremely impressed this summer. They started working with our Tapestry and Epic programs and they are prepped and ready to serve. Also, I'll share that the professional development that the teachers have done in the last five days during in-service time, it's been a combination of both internal and external experts, probably their very favorite presentation and all the staff's. Probably their very favorite presentation in all of the staff's meetings were when Bianca and myself and Carrie presented updates on our strategic plan. I feel like that was probably the heart of everything, that they really embraced that. I'll share that this afternoon, our Rutland City Public Schools community joined together for lunch. We had a keynote speaker who focused on student and family engagement, and we celebrated some of the accomplishments of our staff. We also welcomed new staff and celebrated our longest-serving staff, which Kathy Archer, who is in her forty-first year, and Bob Levine from Maintenance has been with us for forty-eight years. And I want to give a special thanks to our RHS chamber singers who kicked off the event, and that's led by Shannon Von Senore.
I was thinking maybe they should start our meetings.
Do you like to see me emotional like that? One of the things to know about me is that when I listen to students sing, it doesn't matter if it's kindergarten or chamber singing, whoever, every grade in between. It makes me very emotional, and so I found myself again today, right before I needed to talk, feeling a little...
Yeah, I had goosebumps from head to toe, and tears in my eyes when they sang the National Anthem. It was pretty impressive.
For me, it was the song about being a brand-new day, new day.
How many new staff do we have? If you don't have ever...
Let me get back to you. I'm going to guess it's about thirty.
Okay.
Actually, that's not true, it's about forty-two.
No problem.
There we go.
Oh, wow, good.
Is everything fully staffed, or no?
No, we still have some openings, and they can tell you exactly what's opening in their buildings. We do have some parent educator positions, some educational support professionals. And boy, it was great to welcome them back yesterday. You know, there's a different feeling when everyone's back together, but we still have some openings there. Do you guys want to share what openings you have? Go ahead.
Rutland Intermediate School, we need a school counselor.
A school counselor out there for Rutland Intermediate School? I'm just reporting, just so that then it gets onto the...
Parents everywhere.
Middle School is looking for a science teacher and a math teacher.
ESP for Hollis Street Campus. Parent educator, you mean?
Yep.
ESP with high school.
What is that?
Across the board, educational support professionals or parent educators. We have a couple openings in every building. And that's it, right? Yes, and a bus driver. Thank you, Glenn.
Two.
Two.
So does that mean you're going to get your bus driver license this year?
Kathy and I are going to drive a bus in retirement, we said, so, yeah.
Would you like to give, would you like me to give an update on Act Seventy-three?
Yes.
Okay. So, an update on Act Seventy-three, which is the law pertaining to redistricting. The school district redistricting, that's a tough word to say. Task Force has started its work. The group is responsible for recommending three possible statewide configurations for school districts. They have to take into account geography, enrollment, transportation, the local government structure, and access to independent schools for those districts that tuition students. Each district should ideally, the new district should ideally serve between four and eight thousand students. And then during the two-thousand-twenty-six legislative session, our leaders will consider the recommendations and next steps. The Task Force has identified key challenges and themes, and those are declining enrollment, an increase in per pupil cost, and a lack of consistency in services and opportunities for our students statewide. The goal really of the Task Force is to ensure equity and long-term sustainability. There is a strong agreement amongst the Task Force that has emerged, and that's protecting the strength of local elementary schools and in ensuring changes in management, given the current capacity of the AOE. So making sure that any decisions they make are not unmanageable for the current status of our AOE. The Task Force is working on compiling some data, and it's quite an extensive list. It's including enrollment, the projections, the birth rate, school facility conditions, student commute patterns, and the government and staffing structures. There will be, I know, opportunities for public hearing, and that's one of the things that we can do to help move things forward, is to advocate for what we think is best for Rutland. Kathy and I sent an op-ed piece to the Rutland Herald this week, and we're definitely committed to helping our community stay involved and knowledgeable about the progress of the Task Force.
Does anybody have any questions about what's happening?
Okay. Bianca.
Hey. Good evening, everyone. Bianca McKean, Assistant Superintendent. I'm here to give a brief update on some of the professional development and school improvement work that we completed over the summer. You'll see I've added a few notes about some things we did late spring. Before I launch into this, I'll just mention that you heard from many of the building principals about some of the school improvement projects that happened this summer. Most of those, we fund with our title funds, with our grant funds. So we look to write investments to help meet all of the limitations of the title funds, to allow us to do some of this additional work. So I just thought that was important to note, including also some of the projects like bringing the skateboard ramps to PPLC. That was all paid for out of title money. And I will just note that we also have a brand-new posted part-time interventionist at Rutland High School, which we are in the process of getting final approval in our title grants for as well. So that's an anticipated opening at this time. Okay, so this summer, we, I grouped our work into three priority areas for you. Work related to curriculum instruction and assessment, which I would say aligns to our teaching and learning section of our strategic plan. Work tied to safe and healthy schools and our social-emotional learning. And safe and healthy schools is part of the umbrella that you'll see in the continuous improvement plans that the schools will be reporting and sharing data on throughout the school year. It is also aligned to our wellness components in our strategic plan, and then also the professional development that we did. So some of the curriculum instruction and assessment work at basically our K-through-six schools, we had our Unified Arts teachers, also known as our specials teachers, so PE, music, art, IT, et cetera, did some assessment development, and they worked in a cohort to do that. At both the intermediate school and the middle school, there were groups of teachers who worked at the grade level and academic teams to also work on assessment development. At Rutland High School, we had a team doing some curricular development for some of our individualized programming through some of our different programs within our continuum of supports for students. At Northeast, there was a team of teachers that worked on creating STEAM, so that's Science, Technology, Engineering, Art, and Math maker spaces for their classrooms. And also, as you heard this morning, both Northeast and Northwest used some time to prepare for and implement the Kinder Camp programming, which really could fall in a variety of the different categories, but this list was a little shorter, so I put it on this one. But you'll see that it really does span also into the safe and healthy schools and social-emotional learning. Any questions about the curriculum instruction assessment projects?
What exactly is the Kinder Camp? I should have asked that question when you guys...
So it is an instructional opportunity, but it's also a family engagement opportunity for kindergarteners to ride the school bus, see the classroom, head of orientation screening.
Okay, so that went on for two days, or...?
Yeah, this evening and yesterday evening.
So it gives families an opportunity to kind of get into the school and have a mini orientation while learning, and, you know, helping our families adjust to that transition as well. And then they will also do additional work, the students with the teachers, throughout this week. But the Kinder Camp is like optional and fun and gets our kids connected to school.
About an hour each night. It's about an hour each night.
Oh, okay.
And we have done that for quite some time.
Right.
Okay, so safe and healthy schools and our social-emotional learning environments. At Northeast, you heard Justine talk about this. They did some work to adjust the environments and spaces so that they are really conducive for learning for all and trauma-informed. So looking at how the space can help a student to be successful, especially at those young ages. At the Rutland Intermediate School, there was a team that worked on development of proactive and preventative curriculum to address hazing, harassment, and bullying. Also, at Rutland Intermediate School, there was a team that worked on restructuring of their positive behavioral interventions and support system. You've probably heard of those before, PBIS. And that was mainly for those upper-level grades. The intermediate school was quite busy. They also had a team that did some development of Behavior Academy. So you heard Christie talk about a real focus on student behavior. So Behavior Academies will respond to targeted behaviors to help students to understand the behavior, what's causing the behavior, and how to sort of reintegrate so that they are not continuing the behavior. That work was led by Ed Dekin, who's our Director of Student Engagement. And so I just wanted to give a little shout-out to Ed, who worked with the team this summer to do that work. Our nursing team spent some time together developing resources for families to address health concerns and some proactive education pieces. We've also restructured our teacher-team time together so that our nurses will be able to meet monthly across the district to continue that work. All of our PE teachers will have time together monthly, Fine Arts, IT, MLL teachers, which is our multilingual learning teachers. So I just thought I'd mention that, that that work can be ongoing, because there's dedicated time for those teams to work across the district. Also, we had a team that was led by Abby Bennett, who is our Director of Student Engagement at Rutland Middle School. It was a district-wide team that worked on revamping the process, forms, and training for functional behavior assessments and behavior intervention plans for students.
You recall that that work was also mentioned in our strategic plan when we talked about wellness and having a common approach to behavior challenges, and so it goes back to our work on the strategic plan.
Yeah, and although I didn't link all of these directly with the strategic plan, if anyone was questioning that, I could tell you which portions of the strategic plan they're aligned to. We also set up our continuous improvement plans, which we are required to do by the Agency of Education, and they help guide how we are spending our title money. We aligned all of those continuous improvement plans to our strategic plan as well. And, you know, you'll sort of see this, and we'll talk about this in future board meetings, but we are hoping to have a venue to report specific data to the board aligned to those continuous improvement plans to also help to show how we are making progress with our strategic plan as well. And this is not an exhaustive list, but these are some of the professional development opportunities that we underwent, I would say really in the last maybe three to four months. So we had sent a team back in March to a response to intervention conference, which again, we funded with our grant funds, and that team said, "We've got to bring this work back to our colleagues." So we had a trainer come in and work with all of our administrators and the teacher leaders that were available to take part in that work. We did a two-day response to intervention and multi-tiered systems of support professional development in June. We also had pre-K-through-twelve professional learning communities and data team training last week. So we had a full day K-through-six and a full day seven-through-twelve to really think very concretely around how we work together as colleagues when we look at student data and we look to inform our instruction to meet the needs of our students. So we did some training on that. We had pockets of that that have worked really well throughout the district. The particular trainer who came in actually came in twenty-eleven and twenty-twelve, and we were able to get that same trainer to come back in and kind of give a reset. We've had a lot of staff turnover. We, in the past, only had done that training seven-through-twelve, so this was a nice opportunity for us to really look at that training pre-K-through-twelve, and that will help guide our work and give us some framework for how we are spending our teaching time and the time, our teacher-meeting time. Also, pre-K-through-twelve, we had professional development on instructional strategies for multilingual learners. And we had three-through-twelve do that work in June, and K-two did that work this, just in the past week. And the high school actually did a second training with the trainer that we worked with. K-through-four, and some of our specialists, five-through-twelve, did U-Fly training for reading instruction. So U-Fly is a reading curriculum to help with our phonics instruction that we are implementing K-through-four and at some of our higher-level tiers. So we will really be focusing on looking at the science of reading and reading instruction, which aligns with Act One Thirty-nine. You'll hear about that at the next board meeting in our strategic plan update. I know you can't wait, so that's a little teaser. We sent all of our nurses to the Vermont State School Nurses Association Conference, which happened during in-service right here in Rutland. And we were the only district to send all of our nurses, and we paid for them to go with our grant funds. So we were excited for that opportunity. I don't know if they'll do it in Rutland again anytime soon, because a lot of the surrounding area schools did not send teams. So they might have to travel next year, but we were excited to, for them to have that professional development and to be able to send all of our nurses at the same time and not have them out of our schools at a time when our kids need them. So it worked out well. Northeast, Northwest, and the intermediate schools did some additional work on the science of reading and literacy development that was led by Sue Tannen, who was our literacy coach last year. Also, in the spring, we did some wilderness first aid, lifeguarding, and CPR first aid training for interested staff. This past spring, we used our grant funding to run three courses. Learning to Read, which was geared to grades K-through-three, Reading to Learn, which was geared to grades four-through-twelve, and then ELL Support. We hope to offer some additional reading courses this year to our staff as well with our grant funding. And we had lots of teachers who did their own individual professional development as a part of their individual goals. And we had many staff taking part in that over the summer when they had a little bit of extra time to kind of reset and focus. Any questions for me?
I'm just curious, I love that you're doing all the professional development. The instructional strategies for multilingual learners caught my eye. What are the most popular home languages other than English that you're encountering?
We have several in the district, and I'm not going to give you the exact count.
That's fine.
But Arabic, Spanish, French... Principals want to help me out? Yep, several.
Hosh two, one of them. Hosh two.
Perhaps, yes, we have several, and I think that's a wonderful thing for our school. It also can sometimes be a challenge, because, you know, in some places, you might say, "Oh, we have a very large MLL population, and the majority of them have Spanish as their home language." We have a slightly different situation where we have many different languages. And we were very fortunate that Andrea Hongsfeld, who is a national speaker and expert on these strategies, lives in southern Vermont and was able to kind of work with us and work out a deal with us to be able to sort of do that training as a local person. And this year, for the very first time, we qualified for Title III funding, and we didn't think we were going to have it, we didn't have it at the beginning of the summer. And then we got it back. So anyone else living in the grant world this summer in education, it was a little bumpy, but we were able to use those funds to support that professional development. And we have several other investments that we're hoping to utilize those funds to support our students and our staff now that we have them for this year. Hopefully, they will continue into the future. And I will just say that the other good thing about that professional development is what's good... is what's good for our multilingual learners is good for all of our learners. So just us with a lot of other professional development. It was a lot of other instructional strategies as well that we can use in our classrooms for all of our students. And so it was really a nice opportunity for our staff.
That's great. Well, I just want to say thank you for all of the grant work. Saying it was bumpy is the understatement of, I don't know, the year for sure, maybe decade. So thank you for staying true to the course.
It was a great first full year of me doing it on my own when we had so many adventures along the way. But I feel very, I feel decently equipped for navigating those Cs. So thank you. So thank you.
Thank you. Committee reports. We have policy tonight.
Yes. So about two months ago now, June 24th, a few different policies that we were going over. One of the bigger things that we kind of, that we're going to be sending the first reading, one of the bigger ones, I would say, is the added wording of advertising or promotion of events held at schools. Need to be clearly stated that it's not sponsored by us just because it's in a public space. Because that can get confusing sometimes. Besides that, there was a, we had a community member at our April meeting that wanted to see about a policy regarding a negotiation timelines that we will be discussing next policy in September, the 16th at 5:00 PM.
Thank you. Anyone, any questions about policy? Okay. So may I have a motion to move these five policies to second reading? So moved.
Second.
Any, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Any unfinished business? Well, we have a few items under new business. Did you want to-
I just wanted to, even though I'm, as building chair, want to thank Glenn and his committee. I know I'll be talking about some stuff in two weeks, but again, as has been echoed by all the administration, everything that your team does day in and day out is very thankful to keep our buildings as beautiful as can be. So thank you for all the time and work that your team did this summer.
And I will give that. Okay, so we have the board meeting schedule, which does not include the VSB conference. Well, I guess, so this is the board meeting schedule. Pam, is there anything you want to say about-
I think we need to just address the November 11th meeting. It's on Veterans Day and what you'd like to do with that meeting date.
Any thoughts, anyone?
I think we should probably change it. Well, no, I just feel like it's a disservice to veterans that you're not important enough. We're going to have her meet, so-
I thought that was a given.
So did I, so did I, till I just saw it on.
I'd say move it to Monday or Wednesday of that same week.
Move it to the 10th or the 12th.
Because it's still the same week.
Everyone want to check their calendars and see?
I'm not going to check mine. It's far enough out that I can change whatever. 12th is better. 12th, is the Wednesday okay with everyone for just that week? Soccer players, do you guys have soccer game that night?
I'm not sure at this point.
Okay.
And it could change also.
Very true.
Probably playoffs.
Yeah.
They're probably over.
Usually, usually they're done by then.
Oh, yeah, we're in November. Sorry. Wrong.
Don't extend the season.
So can I have a motion?
I was confused about the month. So moved. Second.
All in favor?
What day did we decide?
Wednesday the 12th.
Oh. I was laughing. Wednesday the 12th.
Okay.
Who moved that?
Stephanie, did you move it?
I think so. I don't know.
I thought Charlene's first.
I don't know.
So I did get a request to discuss the meeting start time and requesting if we could move it closer to 6:30, 6:15. Difficulty getting here by 6 o'clock. And so that sort of spurred a conversation about the length of our meetings and how late they go. And we want to propose that in lieu of having any really late executive sessions, that we would schedule a meeting on the off Tuesday.
An executive session for the off Tuesday?
The off Tuesday. If it's a long one, if it's a short one, we'll keep it right after the meeting. But if it's an extended one, say a hearing or an issue that's going to take some time, we would move it to the Tuesday that's normally off. And that would allow us to start a little bit later and, but still-
What about committee meetings and stuff? So that means every Tuesday-
The committee meetings are always have different, they're always either 5 or 6 o'clock. That's up to the chair.
I understand that, but I'm just saying, those Tuesday meetings and the executive session on the off-meeting days would mean pretty much are tied up every Tuesday.
That's what that would mean.
But I mean, back-
Every Tuesday.
Not that long ago, there were meetings, you know, we were meeting the second and fourth Tuesday of the month, which I would like to go back to.
I would as well.
That was about six years ago that we were in that pattern.
Quite a while ago.
So that came up as two, coming back to two full meetings each month.
I mean, we just changed from six, from 6:30 to 6:00 last year, which, two years ago now?
I've been here since, it's always been 6:00 for me.
I mean, it was fairly within the last few years that we changed that. And, you know, I mean-
What's the need for the change or why?
Here, by 6:00 is tough with the work environment.
Because they work out of town or?
Just their work schedule.
I will say for myself, even 6:15 makes, it sounds weird or, you know, insignificant, but even 6 to 6:15 is a huge difference for me to wrap up, you know, because I'm an appointment-based type of work. So things can kind of vary a little bit, and it gives me that buffer, even that little bit of buffer to ensure that I am here on time. So obviously, it's, nothing is a make or break, and 6 o'clock can also work, but it makes just that amount of ease on my schedule.
I just want to also be mindful of the fact that we have all these people that are showing up too, you know, and just want to be accommodating to folks that have to get here late as well and they want to-
And stay late after a long day.
I'm fine with going back to 6:30. And I know it's a long day, but sometimes, you know, executive sessions have to go long, like depending on what the subject is, we can't, sometimes it's not always able to move out to two weeks later. So, but we were at 6:30 not that long ago, and we were also two meetings a month handful of years ago, so I'm okay with whichever way we go.
I think if 6:15 handles the concern, then maybe we do 6:15. I don't know.
No, we might as well do 6:30.
Yeah.
The 15 minutes isn't-
If 6:15 saves us from coming in an extra day, I would prefer that.
It's not going to though. That's two different things.
I still like 6:00, but I'm mindful for what everybody wants to do, but, because I'll just keep working and then I come straight here, now I'm going to just, I guess, work later.
My perspective, this is not a make or break, like everything can be accommodated. So if 6:00 works for the general population and everybody else, you know, I, and if it saves another, you know, more time, definitely will make it work.
Yeah, I think we should stay at 6:00.
There's a lot of people showing up here.
Exactly. And they have to hang around if they live a ways out, they got to hang around the city and-
If people are at home watching, they got, I don't know, they want to go to bed. I want to go to bed. I don't know. I'm sorry. I don't want to do your homework, right? Yeah, I don't know.
So what I'm reading is we don't need to, I don't need to ask for a motion that we're just going to maintain a status quo and-
Yes.
Keep on keeping on. Yeah?
Yes.
Keep on keeping on.
I was revisit later.
Keep on keeping on. We can revisit again if we want to. Okay.
Awesome.
Wanted to talk about a board retreat. And Pam and I were looking at the calendar and to talk about 2025, 2026 goals for the board for our, and talk about any kind of professional or board development that we want to do. It's typically a full day historically. And my thought was, you know, of course, everyone decides what it's going to look like, but maybe we have, we have two Tuesdays this, in September, that we don't have meetings. And we could do evening, we could split it into two evenings, have it someplace off-campus, have food, you know, have it, have it dinner together and do that. It's the 23rd and the-
30th.
And the 30th. So I'd like to entertain a motion to do that, but I know we should have some conversation. I think we do need to have a retreat.
So can I make a motion so we can have discussion?
Yes, please.
Make a motion?
Okay.
For what you said.
And a second, please.
Second.
Okay.
For a retreat on the-
23rd and the 30th. Or the alternative would be to take a day.
And you were originally thinking, I think, 5:30 to 8:30, or maybe we want to push that back to 6:15. Got a couple of hours each night.
And would have food.
I think it's a great idea. I think we've done it. I have done it. I don't know.
I've done it.
Anybody around here? Didn't we do it?
Yeah.
We haven't done it in like-
There was one time where we had done it. There are people there. It's been a few years. Yes, it's been a while. I thought it was, I thought it was great. We did it in the library at the high school upstairs. Oh. Right? Oh, it's such a lovely space. Yeah, they have these big conference rooms in the high school.
Oh, yeah, we really liked the library on our tour.
And then we ordered food in. Oh, that's free. I didn't realize, we didn't get that far? I didn't, you didn't know where we were happening at?
Well, I wanted to make sure that everyone was good.
Oh, just doing it? Come on, you guys.
It is also a question of where, and Sherry is, was investigating some off-campus ideas, but the library is perfect.
I thought we were like way down the road with this already. It's free. Oh, sorry, we already even talked about, yes, come on. It's all get together. Yes, yes, Charlene.
Why did Justine engage the ghost in the spring?
I can't wait.
I have messages into VSB about a facilitator, maybe Debbie Singizer, if she's available. I know our schedule is packed, but having her come down and help us walk through the formulation of our goals, hopefully. If not Debbie, maybe someone she recommends. So everyone's, okay.
Clearly, I am in favor of it, but-
I don't think I need a motion. I don't think so. I just want to make sure everyone was on board with the idea.
I still have my work calendar. Can I, can I email you? I know I'm just one person. I'm not, I'm not the- But you're an important person. We're all, everybody's an important person.
I mean, obviously, if somebody can't make it, that's not the end of the world either.
Nothing without you too. Thank you for saying that. Yes. With all of us. We've been in it, you know? Yeah.
So last item under new business is the VSB conference in Burlington at the Hotel on the Waterfront. I can't remember what it's called.
It's the Hilton.
Yeah, the Hilton. And we are all invited.
October 30th.
And I'm going and happy to drive anyone who wants to come.
There is a training on the 29th for board chairs and superintendents, which I think we are planning on attending together. And then the 30th is open to all board members and superintendent.
What do we do if we're available to go? What do we, do we-
Let me know. We could do one-
Email you, yeah.
One bulk registration.
Okay.
When do you need to know by?
There was a deadline.
Yeah, there hasn't, the registration is still forthcoming, like they haven't submitted the form. This was just an advertisement, like save the dates.
All day?
That's not if you're interested.
What day is it?
On the 30th.
It's a Thursday.
The 30th?
Yeah, Halloween's a Friday. Very exciting.
Is it a go down, come back thing? Probably, yes, yes.
Where is it, Burlington? It's a waterfront.
It's in Burlington, yeah.
It's not a sleepover, it's a-
It's a day.
Oh. Just saying.
You can have a board retreat.
Do the board retreat that night? I mean-
The question for Thursday for the, it's from 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM at the Doubletree by Hilton in Burlington, and there is registration in the email that, if you get it from the VSB. I'm trying, is the Doubletree downtown?
Doubletree's not on the water.
It's not on the water.
The Doubletree is on-
No, that's one of South Burlington.
We know, we know where the Doubletree is. Well, it's not on the water.
It's right across the street from the, like, athletic complex at UVM.
Oh, it's on the other side of town.
Okay. All right, I'm going to let you know if you want to go. You're going to let me know if you want to go.
Let you know if you want to go. So we all- Time in that pool with hockey teams. Sweetly, have you? Stephanie, sorry.
Doubletree, you can call me sweetly.
I like your students.
No, we have the holiday, or nah, holiday in, in South Burlington.
Lots of hockey tournament time at the Doubletree and, yeah. Lots of pool time. Occasionally hockey. I don't think there's anything else for new business.
Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?